And we're back. This is episode 489 of the Columbia Calling Podcast. If you've been with us for many years, you will know who this character is, who this personality is. But if you haven't, well, go back four years and you will find an interview with Diego Lacerna, who is a city councillor for the Green Party here in Bogota, and he's up for election again. So we're going to talk about these local elections here in Bogota with Diego himself. So after four years away, Diego, welcome back on the Columbia Calling Podcast.
Thank you very much, Richard. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Well, thank you. You came, yes, but no. More importantly is congratulations to you because you are a new father. We won't say anything else, but major congratulations. It does seem like baby season. A lot of people seem to have newborns at the moment, but a difficult time for you because you're on the campaign trail and you have a newborn at home. How do you manage both things?
Yeah, I ask myself the same question every day.
Well, it's all good though. I mean, there's nothing like it. There's nothing like becoming a parent and you somehow make it work. You know, all of these busy things, people have done it for the ages. We feel like it's the hardest thing we've ever done, but then the next generation does it too. If you're watching on YouTube, Diego is in his green and yellow top, Lacerna al Consejo. He is, as I said, the Green Party, the Green Party has obviously been around for some time now, and he is a city councillor. And I think we need to talk, well, first and foremost, the elections are on the October 29th. Unfortunately, Diego, I'm going to be out of Colombia. I won't be able to vote. I mean, this seems to me like a really lost opportunity, but we know you're going to do fine. You've been a councillor now for four years. Let's, let's talk a little bit about what a city councillor in Bogota does.
Okay, Richard. So first, it's a shame you won't be here on October 29th, but.
I'll be on a boat.
What does a city councillor do? Technically, two things. One is proposed bills for approval or denial by the rest of the city councillors, or vote on bills proposed by the mayor. That's the first thing. That's called proyectos de acuerdo, actividad normativa.
Okay.
The second formal task that we have is debates. We invite different secretaries that work for the mayor to debate topics that we're interested in for one reason or another. So urban development, the historical landmarks, sex education, the valorización, works, constructions, transmillennial, security in transmillennial, people who skip the, who don't pay their fair and go into the system, all of those types of topics we discuss here at the city council. And sort of informally, but that's probably the majority of our work, is being a bridge between the needs of citizens and the city offices that are supposed to fulfill them. So a tree is about to fall over my house. Somebody help me cut it before it falls. So they call the city councillor and the city councillor calls the agency and they do it. I don't have a spot for my kid in my local public high school, so they're sending him an hour away by bus. Please help me. I'm going to deliver a baby and I don't have anywhere to deliver it. Where, where should I go? Please help me. We, we deal with these types of requests daily and they take up a lot of our time. But that's the job. So those three things.
Do you kind of also like checks and balances on what is discussed in the mayor's office? You make sure that if things are agreed, that they are carried out?
Yes. So in the two first topics in bills, well, we can deny the mayor what she's proposing or in the future he. So she's asking for a loan, if she presents the budget, if she wants to create a new city department. And we say, no, she can't do it. And in debates, well, they're mostly checks and balances. You're basically analyzing what the city government is doing, pointing out what doesn't work and suggesting how it could.
So we've got, I mean, Claudia Lopez is the current mayor. She will be the outgoing mayor, obviously. Green Party candidate, first woman mayor, I think, apart from Claudia, Clara Lopez, I suppose, who was in for a little bit.
Yeah, but she was elected, she was appointed.
Yeah, it was just a replacement. Obviously, you know, alternative and so on. You're of the same party. So of course you're going to say that she's been a great mayor. But if we read the newspapers, people aren't, you know, I mean, the press is one thing here in Colombia, but they've been pretty, pretty unpleasant to her these last four years.
No, so I wouldn't say she has been a great mayor, Richard. You know, you can have differences in your own party. I, I think these four years have been particularly difficult for Bogota. We had the pandemic, we had el paro nacional, the national strike. We've had a massive influx of very, very poor Venezuelan immigrants that the city has had to take care of. We had riots on, in September of 2020, where they burned down like 40 police stations around the city. So it hasn't been an easy period. Claudia, I think in general has been responsible. I think one of the main problems Bogota has is that the incoming mayor tends to snuff everything that the previous mayor did and start from scratch. And Claudia has been responsible in that respect, continuing the main projects that were developing when she arrived in office. I think she has developed an interesting idea for the city, working around something called manzanas del cuidado, which are like.
Is it like a community watch type thing where you look out?
Yeah, they're like hubs of, they're hubs of social services. Designed particularly to take a load off women's backs, that they can leave their child with somebody while they exercise or study or just relax. Or that they can leave an aging parent or disabled relatives and somebody will give them a hand for free and at the same time be surrounded by social services that allow them to develop their capabilities, rests, et cetera.
Well, that's a very human, very, that's a very community oriented thing, and I, which I haven't heard about. And I read the papers. We don't hear enough about these things. So, I mean, Claudia, as you said, there's a, we can't, I mean, you know, she hasn't been a great mayor, let's be honest. But at the same time, she's continued the projects of the last mayor, which is unusual here in Colombia. Normally it's the new guy gets in and it will be an old white guy again this time, because that's all of the options. But you know, they normally get in and say, no, let's turn it all around. This is my plan and it sets us back another four years or longer. And of course, of course, we can't help but mention the debate that will continue forever and it will be the metro. Now, for Bogota's metro, ground has been broken. Things are being done. I know that there's a bit, the depot in Bossa, so in the extreme, is it the west of the city? Yeah, the extreme west. I know there's a depot is there and you see other works going on. Are we going to wait another 25 years? I don't know.
No, I don't think so. First, well, I'm hopeful that the second round of this election, Lana Oviedo, and hopefully we will not even have that debate in the second round. But even if Bolivar, who's the candidate, supported by Pedro, goes to the second round, he'll talk about it and talk about it. But in reality, I think he's not stupid enough to, to stop it. Because it would not only be a huge harm for the city, but a very serious legal risk. And I don't think this guy who lives comfortably in Miami, most of the time, is going to sacrifice his personal life over a reckless decision like that.
But I think that's an important moment to introduce the candidates that I am aware of, of course, Gustavo Bolivar of the Pacto Histórico, so backed by the president, Gustavo Petro. Is it Luis Carlos Oviedo? What's his, Luis Fernando? Juan Daniel Oviedo, who is like Bogota con todo, con todo por Bogota, independent. In fact, he went to Montos when he was planning his, planning his campaign. He went up for a month. So there you go. Yeah, he didn't, he didn't stay in the hotel or in my house, but anyway, never mind. Then we've got Diego Molano, a former minister of defence and prior to that, head of the ICBAF, so the sort of child welfare agency, most well-known for being, yeah, minister of defence during the estadio nacional and especially in Cali, so the, as you say, the unrest in, in the country. Robledo, I guess he's with the Polo Democrático?
Party called Dignidad.
Dignidad. Molano, as we didn't mention, he's Centro Democrático, so the.
No, he, he gathered signatures. Nobody wants to run for Centro Democrático.
Yeah, okay. But he'll get their votes though. I'm getting this all wrong. And then Lara, who is son of a former politician who was, was killed. So you've got him as well, Lara. And then of course, we've got Galan, son of a former politician who was killed as well. So, but leading the polls, I think at the moment is, is Galan, no? In the Nuevo Liberalismo?
Yes. So far, Galan is ahead and in second place is Gustavo Bolivar with Oviedo very close to Oviedo.
I, yeah, so Gustavo Bolivar, I don't know. I mean, wherever anyone's politics lie, he just doesn't come across very well. I mean, that's my most civilized way of putting it. And if you say he spends most of his time living comfortably in Miami, is that really the kind of person? I noticed that little dig. I noticed that you put that in there, of course, but you have your candidate. You, tell us why you are backing then Oviedo. I saw a photo with you on Twitter today. I think you were eating a piece of corn, or he was.
Yes, we both were. Okay. So first, why I'm supporting Oviedo. Oviedo is the former head of the Statistics Department in Colombia. This is his first incursion in politics. So I think he combines two values that I appreciate and that ultimately me, me support him. One is that he has a technical background, that he's not just going to talk and talk and talk and talk with no evidence behind it, that he's not going to propose things that he can't do. And the second value that I appreciate a lot is that he is relatively politically independent and that he is not, well, entangled by all the alliances with the local political parties that end up in the huge, I don't know how to say that in English, the pork barrel of politics, where you vote for the mayor and the mayor gives you public positions. We, a big part of what's wrong in the city is the interruption in the, the main projects. And the other problem is just that most of the politics in Bogota happens like that. Politicians exchange their votes for a, well, public positions. Yes, so there is no, there's a very poor public debate. Most of the things, whatever mayor proposes, go through the city council and it's, I mean, this will be a progressive change, but I hope Bogota will be less involved in those kinds of politics as time goes by. And I think Oviedo is the best option to do that. I was, I was exaggerating about Bolivar. I don't know exactly where he lives. He has a house in Miami, but the point is he lives comfortably. He's not going to risk his whole future over stopping the metro project in Bogota, I don't think.
Now, Oviedo famously talked about sort of like an immersion process. I think, was it in Bossa that he went and he spent, is it a month living down there? And the reaction was, you know, we are not for immersion. There was, there was quite a backlash, wasn't there?
Well, I mean, I don't think Twitter is the best measure of anything in Colombia. But yes, I'm sure some people thought it was offensive and other people were happy that, that a candidate, a well-known person is going to spend some time in one of the poorest districts in Bogota. So I'm sure it went both ways.
Yeah. So let's talk about some of the, I mean, the, the main issues, obviously, that everyone will talk about and other talking points. Transport, of course, you know, transmillennial metro, et cetera. Transmillennial, for those of you who don't know, is the bendy bus system that was, for me, redundant as soon as it came out. It was already, it was, it was made for the year that it was launched, not for 2023. It has not grown and has not been, let's, let's say, it, it is not the sole solution for Colombia's transport, Bogota's transport issues, you know, a metro, better bus system. But the other main issue that needs to be addressed is that of security. People feel in the Gallup polls and the Invarmer polls, that security has worsened in Bogota. Has it worsened or are we just a bit more aware of it happening?
Well, it's hard to tell because, well, the, the official numbers are, are not as concerning as reality feels. But yes, I don't remember such a level of concern about security in many years in Bogota. I tend to trust more people's perceptions than the official numbers. Because many people don't report the crimes their victims of. So it never makes it to the official numbers.
Yeah.
Why that's happened, well, I discuss some of the, the things that have happened in Bogota during these four years a few minutes ago. No doubt Bogota is more poor, more disorganized today than it was four years ago. Some people put all that responsibility on the mayor. I differ, I think, any mayor who would have had to deal with these issues would have had similar results. But yes, we need to react to that. It's not easy because most of the responsibility is in the national government for the police in particular, for the judicial system. It's, it doesn't depend on the city. It mostly depends on the national government. And the national government has very little concern for the security, not just of Bogota, but of the country. That's just a topic they are not comfortable with. And that is mostly operative. It has to do with executing strategies, not, not with discourse. And the national government is very good on discourse, very poor with execution.
You've, you've said something that the analyst from Columbia Risk Analysis, Sergio Guzman, has repeated many times on this show. Very good at dialogue and discourse, very bad at execution. And the left is never particularly good on, on security, anywhere in the world. The left is not good on security. Let's just be honest about that. Would there be a better solution if, and I, and this is a big question for you, I'm afraid, but this is, you know, we have the Minister of Defence, Ivan Velazquez, and one of his remits was to take the police out of the Defence Ministry and put them into the, put them into the Interior Ministry, surely, where that the, the minister is Alvaro Leva? Is that, that's right. Would that help the policing?
It would help in one sense. It means that the mindset of the police is still very much associated with unconflict in Colombia. So many policemen had to fight the guerrillas or the drug traffickers and it's, it's a different type of conflict than what you have to deal with in, in a city like Bogota every day. So there's still all sorts of human rights abuses that I believe are linked to, to that mentality, linked to the, the conflict. Passing the police from the Defence Ministry to the Interior Ministry would have the purpose of making it a more civilian force, better trained in human rights issues. But it wouldn't necessarily mean that they would be more effective fighting crime. So I agree with that proposal. It's been, being discussed for a while in Colombia, but it won't help solve crime in Bogota. It might help solve human rights abuses, but that's only part of the problem.
Yeah. I think, as you say, but it might, it might be symbolically significant, taking it away, you know, moving it across. But that, that, okay. Well, let's talk about you a little bit here, give you an opportunity to, you know, sing your own praises and your success story. When you first, when we first talked all those years ago, you admitted to me that you don't really like talking in front of a crowd of people. Now you've done four years of talking in front of a crowd of people in the Consejo. Are you, are you getting more comfortable with this, I hope?
Yes, I'm certainly more comfortable. I wouldn't say I like it still, but I'm probably better at it.
Well, it's, you know, it's a strange career choice for someone who doesn't want to talk in front of people and negotiate. But never mind, you've done it, you've got better, you say, you don't have to enjoy it. And when we talked, and I remember part of your campaign, and it was about Bogota needs more nerds. I mean, you, you're there in your thick spectacle, so that's your, your, part of your calling card. But you talked about the need for like improving, I think, improving and cleaning up Bogota's rivers, because you saw that the water system was connected to everything. So like, you know, health, the environment, and of course, the, you know, desirability of living in a city. Has there been any proper advance on this in these last four years? Because that's a tough one.
Yes, very little, unfortunately. We've had, well, one big fight is the construction of the treatment plant that would clean 70% of the dirty water that goes into the Bogota River. We approved the financing, the studies are finished, they have an environmental licence and everything. They just need like a check, a good to go, a signature from the Finance Ministry. And in the Finance Ministry, Pedro, Pedro's Ministerio de Hacienda, has refused to approve the loan to build the treatment plant. So there has been no progress on that front, unfortunately. It's unbelievable. Pedro speaks and speaks and speaks about water and the sustainability goals and the environment and in something as basis, because this, it has, his government has also been an obstacle. So no progress on that front. What, the little progress we made, I think, in this respect is that a regional government, in quotation marks, was approved, created. So there's, this is called la región metropolitana Bogota-Cundinamarca.
You're right.
And it's like, yeah, another layer of government between the local governments, the state governments and the national governments. And the idea is to be able to coordinate public policies in Bogota and its neighbouring municipalities. So that, for example, decisions regarding water, which do not only affect Bogota, can be taken jointly. One of the things that this Región Metropolitana could do in the middle run would be to create a regional sanitation, water and sanitation public company, which would help organize a lot of the imbalances in how water, how do you say this? And how you find clean water around Bogota and how you clean it after you use it.
Yeah. So, I mean, and so if you make this, this regional, like municipality with Bogota, does this also extend in the new project, hopefully, that's going on, the tren de cercanías? Because I know that's one of the issues, is that the division between the sort of metropolitan area of Bogota and then the surrounding department of Cundinamarca, do you, I mean, is that going to get done as well?
Well, there's two projects like that in, in the short-term plan. One is tren de cercanías, a train that goes west to Faca, Anbusquera, and, sorry, well, the west of the city. That one's more advanced and it's been, been contracted by the state of Cundinamarca. So Bogota doesn't have that much to do with that train. And the other one, which is in its initial stages, is the one that goes north to Chia, to Sipakira. But yes, so you create this regional government so that there's no lack of coordination between the state and the city's government, like there is now. And with all the neighbouring municipalities, who all have different opinions about these sorts of projects.
Yeah, because it's, it's that thing, isn't it? In the highway, when you're going out, the, is it the carretera al sur? Whatever, or west, when you, when you're going out and suddenly between Bossa and Swacha, it's unpaved. It's one section, you know, it's clearly, nobody can decide. And it's not even, like, it's not even 100 metres, but it's just this, it just stops. You know, you're like, come on, for the good of everyone, someone. And it can't be that expensive to just join them up, but it's, it's typical, that one. Now, but before you say, before we get into, and you've had another major success and we'll get into that at the end. But what I see from you, you know, what I see from you on social media, you're on Instagram, obviously, and you're on Twitter and elsewhere, we've mentioned it. But what I see from you is that you have been very involved in, in, let's say, the smaller things in Bogota that, that make life more enjoyable. So things like pavements, things like road safety, things like, I would say, you know, making, making Bogota less dangerous, you know, in terms of a walking city, in terms of a more livable city. These, these are the things I, I see you doing a lot. You're very much on the ground and walking around. This is because I, I assume you walk everywhere. I assume you want it to be more of a, an international city on that level.
Yes. So the thing is, us city councillors, whether they're the second line of the metro or the first line, whether the, the tren de cercanías we were talking about or the treatment plant, it builds or not, do not depend that much on us. We can talk about it all day and some of my colleagues do just that. Or we can try to focus on smaller changes that are valuable. So for example, one of the things I did this term, which I'm very proud of, is pressured Transmillennial to create an app that tells you how long the bus is going to take to come to the bus stop.
So like in London?
Like in London, most developed cities. This, this is no like innovation in Bogota. This exists everywhere. But until I was elected, that did not exist. And you can use that app today to report bad driving by a certain bus or the bus didn't stop at the bus stop or it was dirty or whatever. So that app has been downloaded by more than 800,000 people in Bogota today. So benefiting, impacting for the better the lives of 800,000 people is why I choose this job. That is the goal. You are probably talking more about the valorización projects, which are some like really traumatizing construction that's been going on in, in certain areas of Bogota. 160. One hundred and sixteen, ninety-two, ninety-four, seventy-three, seventy-nine, eighty-five. Canal Molí, Canal Córdoba, one fifty-three.
Yeah, Pedagogica, around the back of the Pedagogica University. I mean, it's just, we've just had four years of these, uh, polisombras everywhere. Uh, so that's the, these kind of sheets blocking off works. It, it has made the city really look like it's on bricks.
Yes. And well, basically, what we've done is put the spotlight on what was going wrong in those projects and pressure Idu, which is the city office in charge, to, well, put pressure on the contractor themselves, sometimes kick them out, and finish those works. Um, for the time being. So seventy-three on, behind Pedagogica is finished.
Yeah.
Finally, after, after four years of a lot of pain, they, they took off the polisombras, the green sheets, and it looks like a normal street once again. Eighty-fifth, seventy-ninth, they're like that. Ninety-two and ninety-four are still struggling along, among many others. But what we've tried to do is, first, like, reduce the harm. And second, really criticize how Idu works. It, it, like, infrastructure in Bogota is a nightmare. And it's a nightmare because the city office in charge of it is a mess. And the way to change that is that the next mayor makes a plan of how it's going to restructure Idu. And hopefully, we won't see so much chambodada, chambodada. How do you say that in English?
I don't know.
Next slipshot or?
Yeah, slipshot. Slipshot is good. Slipshot work.
Okay, what else? You also talked about hmm.
I think you've done the clubs. I want to know about the clubs. Tell me, these are these, these are these huge country clubs all over Bogota for, uh, I, wait, let's, let's not say it, let's not beat around the bush, for the wealthy to come and enjoy open spaces, play golf, use tennis courts, uh, swimming pools and so on. Uh, you know, you have, you spearheaded a campaign to get these guys to pay taxes?
Is that it? They were paid before, but the, the fight was the following. So in Colombia, the constitution says there's a rule regarding taxation. And the rule is progressive taxation. The more you have, you pay a bigger proportion of what you have.
Fair enough.
One of the local taxes that we have is called predeal. It's like a real estate tax. You pay based on the value of your property, whether you have a house or you have a store or you have a factory. And the higher the price of the house, the store or the factory, you pay a higher rate.
Yeah.
And so it makes sense. But all commercial establishments in Bogota, a bakery, a hairdresser in Bossa, in Kennedy, in San Cristobal, paid a higher rate than these country clubs, than the country club, Club Los Lagartos, Club El Nogal, et cetera, et cetera. Even though those clubs are worth thousands of times more than the bakery or the hairdresser. Hmm. So.
Hang on, before we say, how much does it like, say, a hairdresser or a bakery, you know, small, a regular shopfront? How, in Bossa or, or in San Cristobal, how much would they pay in predeal tax?
Oh, so the rate was six, eh, was eight, eight per thousand.
Okay.
That's the rate. The rate for the country clubs was six point five per thousand. So you don't know how much money they pay unless you know how much the bakery is valued for or the country club is valued for. So it's not easy to say, like, eh, with money, how, unless you're looking at a specific case. But why, on whose mind, does it make sense that the Bogota Country Club, that is valued in over a billion pesos, pays a lower rate than a bakery in Boston?
Yeah.
That just does not make any sense. So I proposed to change it. And of course, my head was almost cut off by my colleagues, by the people I know who are members of clubs and, well, some of the people who, who think like them. Hmm. It took me three and a half years to get this bill passed and a lot of pain. But finally, we made the change to the rule for progressive taxation applies to country clubs as well. The higher your value, the higher your rate. And since the city is going to receive some extra earnings from that change in the rates, we were able to, to take the real estate, uh, to take the real estate tax away. So they're going to pay zero, all the museums and, uh, and the theatres in the city. So it's, it's an example of what Colombia should do carefully and rigorously. Have smart progressive taxation to increase revenue and redistribute better. And the fact that I was able to do something like that from the city council makes me very, very proud. Because that's the type of projects that I came here to do.
Sounds interesting. So, so you got it turned around. Now the clubs will pay progressive tax rates. Probably not as much as they should pay yet, but because it's a, it's a progressive thing. But educational facilities such as museums and theatres will now no longer have to pay tax, which again makes the predeal tax, which makes perfect sense. And they can reinvest into the infrastructure and of course into, into the arts itself and, and so on. That makes perfect sense. Your, your policy, you, you know, three and a half years, I saw articles which were very negative about you. I think there was one in El Tiempo and they slammed you. I can't remember the main newspaper. It must have been really hard to get that kind of coverage. But, uh, at the same time, and you know, you're Green Party, but it sounds like a, a, a plan more by the Pacto Histórico, you know, more by someone in the left wing.
Yes, and incredibly, they were not very supportive. One.
Really?
Some, some were openly against it. Um.
I thought they would blindly back you on this one. It's a very.
Some, some did, some were supportive, but others, other city councillors from Pacto Histórico were all against it. Did everything, every time to sabotage the project, um, which is unbelievable. But yeah, well.
Were they members of clubs, maybe?
I don't think so. But hmm, their argument is that if you increase the taxes hmm, for country clubs, one day, they might say, like, we don't want to have the golf courses here. We should sell this off to buildings, to a developer. And there's a specific restriction in Bogota's spot in the urban development plan that says, you cannot do that unless for every third of the area that you develop, you give the city two-thirds as public space for free. So if one day, one of these clubs is like, look, I don't, I can't pay your taxes anymore. I'm going to leave to go to Chia. The city's, okay, you can take your whole area, you can develop one-third in whatever real estate you want. And the other two-thirds are going to become open, free public space, which I don't think is that bad of a result.
No, no, I mean, you know, public space and, and so on. Now, your campaign, Diego, it's previously was, it was four years ago, is Bogota Needs More Nerds. Now you have progressed, but the nerds have stayed. You said, los nerdos hacemos la tarea y hacemos bien. So nerds, we, we, we do our, we do our obligations really, and we do it well. Um, so listen to my listeners, let's give you a little bit of a, a, you know, anyone who's resident after a certain amount of time, foreigners indeed, can vote. If you haven't registered, I'm sure you're too late now. But if you can, uh, uh, if you can vote.
They, I think they register everybody automatically.
Okay. Oh, no, I was dead. I'm, I'm, I'm dead. Yeah, yeah. It's happened to me twice now. I'm dead. So, but this year I'll stay dead because I'm not here, so it's all right. But, but if you're a resident in Colombia, you can vote. There are two, two voting stations, I, I believe, for foreigners. One of them's in the Sergio Arboleda. But of course, you look up online and they'll tell you where to go. And so if you're in sort of, yeah.
Or if you need help, I'm willing to help you.
There you go. Get in touch because he wants your vote. So, but, um, now, you are number four on the list. Is that what, is that what we should be looking for?
I'm number four for the Green Party.
For the Green Party.
Going to vote for city council, there's just the party's logos and a bunch of numbers in front. The, the names are not there. So if you want to vote for me, you cross the Green Party's logo and then number four in front of it.
And the logo is a sunflower on it. So there we go. So yeah, green and a sunflower, number four, Diego Lacerna. He has done stuff for Bogota, guys. I mean, you heard it here. I gave him some hard questions too. Security, transport realities, who, you know, different candidates and so on. In fact, you know, he, he has been very honest about the current mayor of his party, Claudia López. So there you go. This has not been a complete, uh, cakewalk for him. Uh, but, you know, I think it's interesting for my listeners to hear what a Bogota city councillor does. I think that's it, because we don't really see, you are the kind of like the invisible faces and the checks and balances of what goes on, the contracts, um, and so on. You know, trying to make Bogota a more livable city. So, um, Diego, thank you so much for your time. I hope this was worthwhile. I hope maybe, you know, we, we can bring you a couple more votes there. I'm sure you'll be okay. Uh, good luck on October the twenty ninth.
Thank you, Richard. If your followers want to continue hearing about me and follow me on social networks, my Instagram, Twitter, Facebook are all at Lacerna Bogota.
Lacerna Bogota.
And about the nerds, one last thing, Richard, because it's not clear to everybody what the hell a nerd in politics is. A lot of people think it's like a pretentious position, like, you know, I'm the most studied, the smartest person around, and you should vote for me. And it's, it's not that what we're trying to say. Basically, it's, look, many politicians in Colombia just talk and talk and talk without ever having prepared what they're going to say or read up on the background or whatever. Here is a group of people. I'm running for city council, but I have some friends running for a list, which you also have to vote for on October twenty ninth. And what we, the, the value added we offer is that we do not talk without knowing what we're talking about, that we study and that we do not take positions just to get retweets or likes, but things that make sense for the city.
There you go. So the nerds are the ones who read up and actually know the, uh, minutia of what the laws in Bogota and what should be done. So there you go.
Yeah, and if we don't, would you say we don't know? But we don't like pull it out of that.
There's, there's, there's a lot of that about pulling it out of, and I won't say the word, pulling the information out of somewhere. But, uh, so let's just say thank you to Diego Lacerna for his time. As he said, social media, at Lacerna Bogota, Green Party number four when it's in the Consejo. This twenty ninth of October, always a pleasure to talk politics, uh, always a pleasure to hear what a city councillor does and where they stand in terms of the central government, where they stand in terms of the mayor's office. And of course, Bogota being the capital, you know, I mean, not to say it's more important than elsewhere, but there are many challenges ahead for the city. And I think that's what we need to, need to discuss here. The, the city is the capital, it is the window to the world, uh, for Colombia, you know, one of the main, obviously the main city in that term. My friends in Medellín, please don't kill me for saying that, but it's, it's just that there is a lot to be done here. That's the reality. There's a lot to be done. So, you know, uh, vote and vote wisely, uh, of course, this October twenty ninth. Thank you again for listening. This has been episode four hundred and eighty-nine. We'll be back next week with more information and stories about Colombia on this Colombia Calling podcast. And goodbye.